Good morning, Atlantic County Council.
Okay, good morning and welcome back, Lafferty County Council. I would ask Mr. Tifo to rise and report, please.
Yes, good morning. Warden Marriott prepared to report that County Council met in camera for a period of thirteen minutes this morning to address two items. One is to approve its in-camera minutes of this meeting on September 1st. And secondly, second item being receiving legal advice pertaining to mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policies. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the update from our medical officer of health. I don't see Dr. Renade on just yet. Oh, there it comes. Good morning and welcome, Dr. Renade. Whenever you're ready to give your report, please go ahead.
Great, thank you, Warden. I'll just confirm that you can hear me?
Very good.
Okay, great. And then I'm just going to make a request for whoever is administering the Zoom, that they could enable me to share my screen before I start, so that that's ready to go. So I have a medium-sized update for you today. The first thing I want to do is I just want to start off by thanking Dr. Greensmith for stepping in while I was away. I really appreciate his willingness to do that. And I've spoken to him as well, but I just wanted to say that in front of all of you folks. So thank you to Dr. Greensmith. And also thank you to you all for enabling me to step away for a little bit to participate in our democracy. That was a really cool experience for me. I really appreciated that. And so I want to say thanks for that. I will structure my remarks just the way we normally do, right? What's happening with our cases locally, some sense of what's happening with cases in the province and around us. We'll talk a little bit about vaccines and then where we're kind of headed over the next few weeks or what we can anticipate. So that's kind of the structure of what I have planned to talk to you about. In terms of our local cases, they fluctuate. So in the last 24 hours, we had seven cases. But prior to that, we had 14 cases. I think on the day before that, we had some higher number than that. But it's either double digits or high single digits. Cases have a lot of contacts. So again, each case has a lot of follow-up work in order to isolate the contacts and follow the guidance that we have from the province on that. And the average trend on those cases locally is increasing. But it's important to know that although our cases are increasing, we started that increase later than the rest of the province, as we tend to do. And so I expect that we will peak also a little bit later than the province as well. So we've started our rise. Everyone else started rising earlier. They're already plateauing or coming down. And we will do the same most likely. So the other thing to remember is that while our cases are going up, then Ontario's cases are either plateauing, or it seems like they're even trending downwards. And that's a good sign. And so you should expect that we will have an increase, but that that will plateau shortly, if current restrictions and et cetera remain the same. We have three outbreaks currently. They are what I would describe as small outbreaks and highly manageable outbreaks. And so they seem to be going okay. And I think the biggest thing we're seeing is is the effect of vaccines in the population. So I'm just gonna share my screen with you for one second, and then we'll come back to finish off what I was going to tell you here. Just can you confirm that you can see my screen now? You should be seeing three graphs? Okay, so this is perhaps the most compelling, one of the most compelling slides that I've seen in a while on the effectiveness of vaccines. One of the reasons it's so compelling is it's recent and it's all Ontario data from the Science Tables. So this is directly from the Science Tables report. They are public. You can see them on the Science Tables website. This is a very recent one that shows from August through September, what is the difference in the magnitude of cases that we see among unvaccinated individuals and cases that we see among fully vaccinated individuals? What is the magnitude of hospital occupancy among unvaccinated individuals with COVID, right? Not general hospital occupancy, and hospital occupancy with COVID among fully vaccinated individuals. And the same with COVID patients in the ICU. So you can see, not only are the rates different, but that connects to the data that we have in Ontario about the vast majority of people in the hospital and in the ICU. And indeed, you know, in general, a majority of our cases being unvaccinated folks. That's really important because I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Maybe you can see me now? Okay, that's really important because not only is that evidence recent and reliable, but it also connects back to the level and quality of evidence that we have on vaccines in general, in terms of their effectiveness. So I can very confidently say to all of you that out of the, all of the tools in the toolbox, vaccines are the most effective based on the evidence that we have at reducing transmission, at reducing hospitalization, and at reducing severe outcomes like death. They are probably the most effective at reducing hospitalization and death. There is an outstanding issue on how effective they are in terms of reducing transmission and how long that effect lasts. In terms of our local vaccine strategy, we have 77% of our eligible population has had two doses. You know, and when you look across the, you know, different provinces, they range between sort of 65%, sort of 80, 85%. So that's the range right now. We're actively pursuing a last, what we call, what the province is calling a last mile strategy, which is can we get to hard-to-reach folks? Can we get to folks who've needed more time to be convinced? Can we get to folks who had other kinds of barriers to vaccination? And so what we're really doing is the strategy involves more drop-ins, the ability to drop in rather, because our demand is lower, continuing our ongoing clinics and doing more sort of outreach work and reaching out to different communities and seeing if there are pockets of people who would like to be immunized but couldn't be for one reason or another. So we're trying to improve the convenience, trying to improve the access and so forth. And we are seeing the effects of some of the policy tools that have been put in place. We are seeing some people at least coming in because of either requirements to be vaccinated from their workplace or requirements to be vaccinated for things that they would like to do in their lives. And so we are seeing some small uptick because of that. The key issue, I think, with vaccines is we've talked about the purpose of the vaccination program. We've talked, right? And really, it's about, like, well, from my perspective at least, the first thing we're trying to do is stop people from dying. The second thing we're trying to do is stop people from going to the hospital and overwhelming the hospital system, like so many people being sick at once and overwhelming the hospital system. And then the third thing we're trying to do is reduce transmission overall, so that the likelihood of getting infected is lower in the first place. So the real outstanding question with vaccines right now is, is the current coverage rate and the distribution of that coverage in the population sufficient to prevent a strain on our acute care system? Okay, that's the real big, that's the question that I'm, you know, looking at right now. And the reason I say that is because when you look over at Alberta and Saskatchewan and Manitoba, they have, you know, moderate, or you know, medium-high coverage rates, right? 60, 70%. And what we're seeing is significant healthcare strain due to essentially unvaccinated people getting very sick and needing to be treated, along with all of the other things that the health system does. And I don't know if that is also going to happen here or not. And I don't know if our vaccine coverage is sufficient to prevent that or not. And I think that it's still an open question. So we're monitoring what's happening. It looks like Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba are sort of experiencing some strain, but then afterwards, the numbers start to slow down and they seem to be able to get out of it, but it's still an open question. And we're not sure what's happening here, but so far, our hospital capacity across the system in Ontario is reasonably intact, although some areas that had some strain earlier experienced, you know, waves within their hospital that were challenging to manage. So I'll leave that there because it's still an open question. But certainly, it's a topic of, or I hope it's a topic of discussion, you know, at the provincial level. And certainly, it is at other provinces too. They're worried about it in New Brunswick and places like that as well. Okay, the things that we need to anticipate in terms of vaccine moving forward and that we're sort of actively planning for, one is the, whenever vaccines are approved for other population groups, so when they become approved for the five to 11 population group, then we will offer that immunization to parents and children who are interested in receiving it. There are some considerations that are different about vaccinating children than about vaccinating adults. Primarily, it's a setup issue. The way that you make vaccines comfortable for children is different. And we're going to try to do that as best we can. You know, by making sure that they have more space around them, by making sure that they can't see other children receiving the shots, so that they don't get worried about all of those kinds of things. We're going to try to put that in place, right? Because we don't want to run it the same way we ran it for grownups, who were sort of a little bit, I don't know, more accepting of them seeing other people getting shots than we are with kids, because we don't want to scare the kids, right? So we're thinking about all of those kinds of things and planning out how that's going to look. We're also offering third doses to people who are immune compromised with specific conditions. The reason that those third doses are being offered is because the thinking is not that their immunity would have waned. This is a very, this is really important. So I hope that this comes across the way I intended. It's not that their immunity would have waned. It's that they may not have built a sufficient immune response with the two doses in the first place. And so we consider three doses to be a primary series for those people, because their immune system may not have mounted a sufficient response with two doses, the way it tends to do with most people. So that's third doses for immune-compromised people. Finally, third doses are being offered to long-term care residents and residents of sort of senior congregate settings. And the thinking there is that there are two risks that are working together. One is the individual risk of those people being medically at risk to, because of their age, essentially. And the second piece is the risk of exposure to them through, you know, the care that's provided to them by care providers. And so that is the thinking behind offering third doses to people in long-term care and senior congregate facilities. And then the open question that is yet unanswered is at what point will third doses be offered either to people who have the medical risk of being older or the exposure risk of living in a congregate setting, but not both? I don't know the answer to that question, but that's, again, another policy discussion that's happening about when would those doses be offered. But I need to tell you that in terms of the science, right? The policy might offer the dose as a means to make people feel protected or as a means to make people, to deal with sort of, you know, the idea that you don't want to wait until you know that immunity is waiting. But in general, what we're seeing is, you know, very, very good protection against the critical outcomes, which are hospitalization and death, of course, extending well into six months beyond the last immunization. So we're not yet necessarily at the place where the evidence indicates the need for broad boosters, although you are seeing that happening in different countries around the world. And so that may also happen, right? And we're planning for that eventuality. What else? So right, how long does the protection last? We think that the protection is really, really long-lasting so far, although six months is not long in the larger timeframe of things. But long enough lasting for the critical outcomes, which are hospitalization and death. And we are still looking into how effective is the protection against infection, which is a precursor to the protection against transmission in the three months, six months, et cetera, in those periods, right? So those are outstanding questions. And they may be, they may be, there may be policy responses to them in advance of actually having the evidence or the information or the answers to those questions. That's important for you to know, because throughout the pandemic, there have been lots of decisions that have been made, maybe out of step with what the available evidence is. And that's okay. There are lots of reasons why those decisions are made. But it's, but I think it's also my role to tell you sort of where the evidence sits on these things. So I think that that's about it. We're actively planning for all of that through the fall. Also, incidentally, just, you know, planning for administration of flu shots as well, for which we predict that there will be an increase in demand. But also remember that the same channels that exist for COVID vaccine are also going to exist for flu shots, pharmacies, healthcare providers, et cetera. So I think I'll leave it there. I think that was probably a lot. But I want to give you some sense of where we're headed over the next few months in terms of vaccines and COVID.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dr. Renade. I see Councillor Napa with his hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Dr. Renade, thanks for that report. In the early days, the essential caregivers were high on the list there. And I see now they're down with the hot dog benders almost. But where do they fit in with the nursing homes and stuff? Are they still eligible for this booster shot? Or what is it, high-risk people and all this stuff? And it just seems that the game's really changed. So I just, people ask me all the time about this.
Yeah, thanks, Councillor. You know, this question has sort of echoes and reminders of when we went through this the first time and how everybody wants to put themselves in line, right? So remember that the reasoning for the boosters in long-term care residents is that they are doubly at risk because of their age, their individual risk, and the transmission risk in their setting of being exposed to different, like, people and healthcare providers over whom they don't necessarily have control over that, right? That decision is potentially independent of what the evidence says around whether or not people need boosters just based on their age alone. We don't really know the answer to that question. But I will tell you that this, that I can understand that this has opened a tap or a potential floodgate for people who want vaccines as third doses, either because of their setting or because of their age. And those decisions have not been made yet. We do not have any information on when or how or who will become eligible next. But I predict that it'll follow a very similar path as we went down the first time because of, because there hasn't been as much clarity around the rationale for offering third doses and the evidence behind it. And so because of that lack of clarity, I think it's going to really open it up to, well, I want one, and I want one, and I want one, and all of the pressures that are then going to build in the system around who should get one and now. And we're going to end up repeating this experience. But at least we have a framework for it, because we've gone through it once before. And so then you would expect that it would be caregivers and first responders and all. Like, we would just be this whole series over again, you know, because there isn't that clarity about what's the reasoning behind the third dose.
Okay, I've seen Councillor Stark and Councillor Byrd. Go ahead, Councillor Stark.
Yes, thank you for your update, Dr. Renade. I was blown away by the slides that you presented. Clearly, the impact on COVID-19, hospitalizations, intensive care unit utilization can almost be directly related to the unvaccinated. Which leads me to my first question, and that is, I am very concerned that testing seven days in advance of an in-person meeting by unvaccinated people is a good strategy. Could you comment on that, please?
I might need more information. Councillor, do you mean that you're concerned that testing is not a good strategy or that it is a good strategy?
I am definitely concerned that it is not a good strategy.
Okay, so in that event, I can offer this commentary, which is that, you know, in general, testing is not going to be as good a substitute as vaccinating in terms of preventing disease, right? But there are outstanding questions about the utility of testing anyway that have not been resolved. In what circumstances should we be testing? What's the most effective way to use that intervention? All of those questions are still, I would say, active and at play and being openly kind of discussed and questioned, right? But I think what you're, I think what you're alluding to is correct, that the the consistent and sustained effect of vaccination probably beats any other intervention that we have. And so, you know, the idea that you can use a test, no matter with what frequency, as a routine substitute for vaccinating in terms of its effect is probably not correct. Vaccination is probably the strongest tool that we have. And can you use other ways of dealing with, you know, the contact between vaccinated and unvaccinated people? You probably can. They should probably be more related to physical distancing and to symptomatic screening compared to actually testing.
Councillor Byrd, do you have a question? Oh, sorry. Councillor Stark, do you have a follow-up? You're on mute, Councillor Stark.
I actually have two, but I'll let Councillor Byrd go first.
Okay, Councillor Byrd, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Dr. Renade, good morning. Thank you for your presentation. Good to see you back. I know we've talked in the past about not being able to 100% prove the transmission and prevention of transmission and contraction. However, following the stats globally, as well as across Canada, you know, it looks like we've probably got 80 to 85% now vaccinated, but we still see a lot of hospital cases. And a lot of those hospital cases are doubly vaccinated. So my question to you is this. It's all ages as well, from what I see from the It's all ages as well, from what I see from the global stats. So why would people who are doubly vaccinated, um, be succumbing to this of all ages? I have, do you have any answers for that?
Yes, Counselor. So, so I think I need to, um, uh, revisit something you said earlier in your comments. The vast majority of people who are being hospitalized and the vast majority of people who are getting cases or who becoming cases are actually unvaccinated, not vaccinated. It is possible that you will see hospitalizations. It is possible that you will see deaths. And it is possible that you will see cases in people who are fully vaccinated. That can be for a number of reasons, including the effectiveness of their own immune system at, at developing a response to the vaccine. But the more likely explanation is that even when you have, like, no, no intervention is 100% perfect, right? And neither are vaccines. And so even if you had 99, 98, 95% effectiveness against hospitalization, you are still going to get some situations where people are hospitalized despite being double vaccinated. The real issue is what is the relationship between the, the likelihood of being hospitalized compared to your vaccination status? And it is dramatically more likely when you are unvaccinated than when you are vaccinated. So the, 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 the sort of, um, uh, comment on the slide that I showed you at the top was that, you know, uh, unvaccinated people have a 25 times higher risk of being in the hospital and a 60 times higher risk of being in the ICU compared to the fully vaccinated. So though you will see it, it will be much less likely than unvaccinated people being hospitalized and, and dying.
Just one further comment, please, then just based on your reply. Thank you. Do you have the actual percentage for, um, Lampton County, uh, who, out of the people in hospital, how many are doubly vaccinated?
Um, I think that the hospital might have that on their website, but we can try to get follow-up with some information in terms of, uh, um, um, what we know. And I think we've also been putting it on our website too, the number of cases that we have that are vaccinated and unvaccinated. So, but I can, I can follow up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, back to Counselor Stark and then Counselor Rambo.
Yes, uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, these are, and these are comments that, uh, or these are questions actually that I asked of Dr. Greensmith during our PM committee meeting and, uh, had intended obviously not knowing that he or you would be here. And I, I don't want you to be, put you in a difficult position of answering for him. But given that you're here, I will repeat what I asked him. And are you aware that during the AM committee meeting, uh, one of our members suggested that a report that came out of Cornell was in fact, um, evidence that the COVID-19 was not as serious an issue as it is being purported to be. Uh, later, that same, um, report in the intervening timeframe between the AM and the PM committee, that, uh, report was proved to have been, uh, completely debunked. Uh, in fact, the author of the ficti- the author of the fictitious report claimed, uh, that it was in fact a, uh, false and nothing more than a conspiracy theory, which is, uh, disappointing to hear that it came from a committee member at the AM committee. Could you comment on, uh, Dr. Smith's, uh, assertions? And further, Dr. Smith, uh, as we have heard in the past, uh, being an acting, uh, minute, uh, medical officer of health, uh, I asked the doctor if he had received any evidence, any, uh, conf- communication or direction from the Minister of Health as to whether he had any limitations on the scope of his authority. His answer was emphatically no, and I'd like you to confirm that if you could, please.
It sounds, Counselor, it sounds to me like there are two sort of pieces to, to what you've asked me to comment on. So, so with respect to conspiracy theories, I, I think that there was follow-up, uh, on that to county councils. So I'll leave that there. But, but I would say that I think your point highlights that there is a lot of misinformation on the internet. There is a lot of, of, um, uh, there are a lot of different ways in which people receive information and not all of that information on the internet is, is always accurate or true. And it can be challenging sometimes to decide what is and what isn't, right? So that's part of the reason why we're here to help out with that. But also the larger piece is that, 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 that issue of misinformation also exists in the greater community. And we do what we can to, to address that. But at the same time, it's almost a problem that's bigger than any one of us or any one agency. It is, it is a very pervasive issue in the way that information is communicated now. With respect to whether or not an acting MOH, uh, uh, has the same powers and responsibilities, uh, as, uh, an, an appointed permanent MOH, I believe the answer to that question is yes. Um, I think you also have some internal resources here, for example, um, uh, through, uh, Mr. Tiffo that might be able to help answer that question. But I'm not aware of any limitations on, on the power of a duly appointed acting medical officer of health. They are not distinct. They can do pretty much the same things that a permanent MOH can do.
Thank you for those answers and clarification for the public. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Rambo, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Um, welcome back, Dr. Renade. I just was just pointing out, um, this is information that we've received direct from you. And so please correct me if any of this is incorrect. AstraZeneca, when it first came out, was perfectly safe and effective until it wasn't. And now we're not using it. Um, earlier this year, the public was told that it was virtually no difference between Moderna and Pfizer vac- vaccines and that it was no problem to have one as your first dose and the other one as your second dose. And, and since that time, we've been told that other countries are not recognizing that as full series. And people are given, the people who were given the mixed doses are now having to go back and, and get a third dose. Um, we've been told multiple, um, recommended intervals between doses depending on availability of vaccines. It started out, it had to be 30 days after your first dose and then it was four months. And now I'm not even sure what the current recommendation is. Um, as early as last week, the Ontario Public Health Table recommended that males 18 to 25 should not, should not take the Moderna vaccine, but should go with the Pfizer vaccine because we were seeing a prevalence of uh, myocarditis in that age category. So like, we've had varying differences and I understand that science changes, but it's changed a lot in the last six months since these, um, vaccines were rolled out. So I'm just wondering how parents of children under the age of 18 can trust that public health is being honest and forthright about the safety and efficacy of this vaccine when we're still obviously learn, at the learning stages and we don't have long-term data?
Okay, lots of questions there, Counselor. I'll start with the last one, right? So, so, um, you know, this issue of trust is really paramount. Um, and, and I, here's what I would say. I think that we try to do our best every single day to tell people what the evidence is about something and then to make recommendations that, that enable them to make choices. That's, that's really the, the base premise that we start from, is we try to give you good information to make the decisions that you, that you need to make in order to determine how best to move forward with your, with your health. Okay, so we try not to overstate or overstep what the evidence actually is. And so when we have these conversations, when you talk about, um, uh, you know, vaccines and kids, I've tried to tell you and everybody, right, so that, that, one, we don't really have a lot of experience with these vaccines, right? We don't, we don't. We also don't have a lot of experience with COVID. We have a couple of years of experience with it, but it's not been around for, you know, uh, decades, right? So when we think about what to do in places where we don't have evidence, we try to look as closely as we can to other things that look like that thing, right? And so really the question is, do we know about the long-term consequences of other vaccines in children? And the main long-term consequence of vaccines in children has been to reduce the prevalence of infectious disease in those children and in the population, right? Having said that, are there outstanding questions about this vaccine? There absolutely are. One, how long does the protection last? Two, how, how, um, good is the protection against transmission compared to the protection against hospitalization? Really good questions and we don't know the answer necessarily yet. And I will try to stay, you know, very open with you folks about, about the things that we don't know. When you talk about, um, um, okay, sorry, now I've lost a little bit of track because there was a bunch of, okay. So there was, there was a few of those questions there about, you know, the science keeps changing, but the policy decisions are being made sort of either in advance of it or without it or whatever, and then they catch up. So there is always that interplay, right? Here's, here, we have to go back to that AstraZeneca thing for a moment. The risk of getting the vaccine, the vaccine-related, uh, thrombosis, right, was four times less than the risk of getting hit by lightning in your lifetime. On that basis alone, I would have said that the risk of COVID is far greater than the risk of this vaccine. But the policy decision was that that level of risk was unacceptable at the level of the population. And therefore, the decision was made to discontinue the use of that vaccine. And you will note that many other jurisdictions kept going with that vaccine, partly because it was what they had, but also because their risk framework was slightly different. They basically said, this is a risk we're willing to accept in order to reduce the population burden of COVID. So, so that is where the science was fairly clear on what the risk was. And it was a policy decision about what to do with that vaccine. And I would say it's fairly similar with the myocarditis risk in Moderna, right? That it's, the risk is known, the risk is actually quite, quite low. It's even lower than the risk of the AstraZeneca vaccine. But the policy decision is that we cannot accept that risk. And so we are going to recommend Pfizer over Moderna in a particular population, right? Having said that, is Moderna still going to be used in that population? Yes. And there, and the policy decision here is that we preferentially offer Pfizer because of the evidence around myocarditis. But if somebody says, no, you know what, I got a first dose of Moderna and I want my second dose to be Moderna because I don't know if someone else is going to accept it, we make sure that they're aware of the risk and we give them the second dose of Moderna, right? So, so these are the things that are interplaying all the time. And I would say that the final piece is that, you know, that, that, um, in principle, interchangeability of vaccines, uh, is, has been known and we've been using it for a while, but in circumstances where another vaccine was not available. The decision to interchange these vaccines here was, I think, based on the basis of the urgency of getting two doses in the face of Delta. And now you're right, we are, we are confronted with a group of people who have two different doses of different vaccines. From a scientific perspective, I think their protection is probably quite strong. The question is, from a policy perspective, will other jurisdictions and other places accept that? And I think that there are active efforts to try to help that. And where that's not possible, you're probably going to see a push for a policy recommendation around what I've called, and I, we've talked about this, the get on with your life third dose, which is if your two doses don't match and you can't get on with your life, can we give you a third dose to help you do that? And that's still awaiting confirmation, but, you know, if enough people are in that situation and if the efforts of government to try to get other governments and other places to accept mixed doses doesn't work, then we might be in a situation where we have to offer those doses and, and we would, as long as there's a supply, we would, we would do that.
Okay, follow-up, uh, Counselor Rambo.
Yeah, I agree with everything that you just said. And I understand, like, everybody has their own risk versus reward decision to make, correct? So does it make sense for a government to mandate that everybody has to do what they say, given that for some people, the risk of COVID is maybe not as bad as the risk that they could potentially have from the vaccine? That's my question. And should it not be left to the individual to make that decision for themselves?
So, Counselor, that's a great question. And I, I'll, I'll try to walk you through my perspective on it. But again, I think it's important to remember that, that in this, in these particular matters, this is not local decision-making, right? So this is happening at a different level from us in terms of what needs to happen, right? So that's important to know because, uh, you know, regardless of what we might think, our ability to control what's happening there at that central level is variable, right? So here's what I would say, um, as, as a core principle, I think we should be protecting, uh, uh, autonomy of people to make decisions about what happens to their bodies. And I, and I would apply that to pretty much every medical intervention that exists, right? And so here's what I mean by that. If somebody comes to our clinic and they've consented and they're like, yes, I want the vaccine. And right at the last minute, that needle's about to go into their arm and they go, you know what, I'm having second thoughts. It is our responsibility as, as healthcare providers to pull that needle back and say, well, I mean, unless it's already been injected. But you know what I mean, to, to say, okay, you, you know, this, it doesn't sound like you're providing consent. And so what are the things that we need to talk about now? Is this absolutely, you, you want to take more time? Is it, uh, that we can give you more information about this or what, what's the issue, right? So in terms of the actual, like, um, medical intervention, I do think we need to respect people's autonomy about what happens to their bodies. So that is, that's the, that's the baseline premise that I think we should start with. If you are about to interfere with that, right? Then there have to be strong and solid justifications. That, right, has been interfered with in the past. And I will tell you some circumstances where we do that. With tuberculosis, there are occasions, and we, thankfully, we haven't had that many of them here, but we have had occasions in Ontario, Canada, where people with active tuberculosis have chosen not to be treated. Now, as a medical, you know, when you're protecting medical autonomy, you say you're not consenting to this treatment and therefore we won't give it to you. The problem with tuberculosis is because it's so highly contagious and can get to lots of other people in very easy ways, there are mechanisms by which we can override that consent in order to require that person to be treated for tuberculosis so they are no longer infectious. That happens for a few infectious diseases, but not a lot, right? It doesn't happen for flu. We don't force people to take a flu shot. We don't force people, but. But, so now the question is, is COVID more like the diseases where we, where we require the overriding of that autonomy? Or is it more like the diseases where we don't? And that's a hard question to answer. I think the real question for me is if the current rate of coverage in our society is not enough to protect the healthcare system that we all depend on to care for us when there are, uh, you know, a number of needs out in the community beyond COVID, then there may be an argument for pushing policy tools that require people to be vaccinated. But to me, you still have to do that first analytical step. You have to be able to say, it's not enough. We haven't gotten to where we needed to be with where we are and therefore we have to do this and this and this. And that is an analysis that I think needs to be done and presented before you move forward to say, these are the ways in which we're going to make people, uh, um, uh, you know, re- require or in another way restrict what people can do based on whether they're vaccinated or not. Um, having said that, I do want to go back and say, out of all of the interventions that we have had for COVID, masking, testing, screaming, blah, 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 blah. Vaccines are the ones that have the greatest level of evidence behind them. They have the highest quality of evidence behind them. And we know that they make the biggest impact out of all of the other interventions. So if there's going to be one, one intervention that you do actually have requirements or whatever around, I would say it should be vaccination over the other things because of the evidence that we have.
Okay, I've seen, uh, Counselor White and then Counselor Byrd with hands up.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, just a couple of, uh, elements to discuss in regards to how we reach, uh, that last mile population. How do we, how do we further educate people and, and maybe clarify some, some issues out there? And certainly some of the questions that I hear, I'm sure my colleagues are hearing, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, and some are perhaps making decisions based on these, these very questions. And that's okay. That's why I'm asking them out loud here. So what can you tell us about side effects in the vaccine? For example, we've all suddenly come to know the words myocarditis and pericarditis. And six months ago, none of us had heard the word once, I'm sure, in our lifetime. Uh, but now it's the reason we are choosing to do and not do something very important. Can, I believe our report today speaks to this. But can you tell us about the prevalence, uh, or the outcomes of myocarditis and pericarditis in those who are unvaccinated and get COVID versus those who receive the vaccination and have this side effect as a result of, of that particular, um, uh, intervention?
Um, sure. So not with exact numbers because I don't want to give you something off the top of my head that, that, you know, I'd rather validate that and get something back to you, which I can do. But I think here's what I would say. Although the general public doesn't generally talk about myocarditis and pericarditis, in the medical world, we talk about it a lot. And, and the reason we talk about it a lot is that it's actually fairly common. It's fairly common in young people to get, uh, myocarditis or pericarditis as a result of any one of a number of viral infections. And so for the, for the population under 18, uh, certainly viral myocarditis, viral pericarditis is quite common. In terms of the, the specific relationship between COVID and myocarditis, that's, that's harder to establish because there are fewer cases and, uh, it, it's harder. that's, that's harder to establish because there are fewer cases and, uh, it, it's harder to make that link necessarily. But certainly, general myocarditis and, and pericarditis is a fairly common thing in young populations. We see it often enough, uh, and it's actually very treatable. We, you know, most people recover very easily from myocarditis that they get from routine exposure to viruses. Now, the, the incidence of myocarditis as a result of COVID vaccination is probably also related to your body's response to the production of that, of that spike protein. And in some people, it results in a response that looks like what might happen if you were to get a general viral illness. So it's possible that these people might have been predisposed to getting myocarditis or pericarditis anyway from another kind of virus that they might have encountered. We don't know that yet. But what I would say is, um, you know, the, the, the thinking here is where you have some evidence that there's a difference between the two vaccines, you can use that to make suggestions about what's advisable. But certainly if any young person came to me and said, you know what? I'd really like to get Moderna, I would say the risk to you of getting Moderna, of, of getting myocarditis from the vaccine is still far lower than the risks that are presented to you from COVID. Now that changes a little bit in the pediatric, young pediatric population, right? Because we know that the risks to them of COVID five to 11, et cetera, are very different because most of them have a really mild course of disease. So the decision making is a bit different in that population. But certainly I would say for the older teens, um, you know, they're just as at risk of severe COVID consequences as a late, as a young 20 year old would be. So an 18 year old to a 22 year old, there's not much difference in that risk. And I would say we would use the same kind of decision making, um, framework for that age as we would for the young twins.
Okay, Counsel Bird.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. So I'd like to, um, speak to Dr. Renegade today again, based on an earlier comment from Counsel Stark. During the last full county meeting when Dr. Greensmith was here, whether, whether information that's presented is true, false, middle, whatever it is, there's a reason that goes with it. And it's difficult to have a hundred percent all the time, but it was from a very good source. And incidentally, Dr. Greensmith didn't offer an alternative source because my whole focus, the question was this. I was asking if anybody had any proof anywhere of the purified and isolated COVID-19 virus. There was no real answer forthcoming. I don't believe Dr. Greensmith had any other documentation to suggest. So that's what we were looking for was the actual proof in some form or another of the purification and isolation of the COVID-19 virus. Further to Counsel Stark's other comments, I am very concerned that we don't accept a Minister of Health's quotation from the news because she definitely made the quote about someone covering an MOH position would be, she wasn't talking about Sonia, but of course she used it on other positions where they had people covering the position. She said, they're merely temporary and acting and inferred they didn't have the same accountability until their board voted them on as a full-time member of staff. Now that's just for clarification. The other thing that is really concerning me here today, from what I've heard from Counsel Stark, is his blaming all the unvaccinated people for what's happening in our hospitals and sickness with the COVID-19 now. And I want to make a very strong statement here. I do not, and I'm shocked, but I do not want to hear any political elected individual ever joining in the blame game. I think that is a dangerous road to go down. We have got, become too divided and too segregated as it is. It's about time everybody started working together for the right kind of results and resolutions to all of this. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Counsel White, please.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Just a follow-up question in a similar vein as my last one. I'm maybe going to role play a little bit here. So this isn't necessarily me saying this, it's bringing this, again, this, this thing that I hear often, especially from a particular age group. And that is, I'm perfectly healthy, I eat well, I exercise, I, I don't get sick at all. I've never been, I've never missed a day of work in my life. At my age group, this is not me, uh, clearly, uh, there, there is a greater risk of getting sick and dying from the vaccine than there is of, of me getting the flu. Can you just speak to, uh, that, uh, that perhaps, is there a difference between somebody's immune response and the lifestyle that they lead? And the ability of them to fight COVID versus the risk of getting, um, the vaccine? Does, does that make sense? That's just one of the narratives out there that I'm, I'm hearing a lot. People suggesting that there's a greater risk of them getting sick or dying from the vaccine than there is of them from COVID because they're healthy and they tend not to get sick.
Okay, I'll, I'll try. I, I, I'm not sure counsel process allows for a lot of role play, but I'll try. So here's what I would say, at the individual level, right? There's lots of reasons to believe that, that most people, right? Indeed, most people under 60 have a, a stronger chance of, of, you know, mounting an immune response that doesn't put them in the hospital and, and having COVID just be like another illness that they get, right? We know that, we know that most people recover from COVID. We know that most people, um, especially if you're younger, uh, have, have very mild symptoms to COVID, right? So the challenge here is balancing individual decision making against population level decision making. And where you need to make that decision at the population level is a number of reasons. One, where, where the, where the virus itself is efficiently transmitting through society. We know that is happening. Two, where the virus itself is, or, or the disease is having a significant impact on our ability to deliver urgent or acute care to everyone who needs it. That may be happening, but we have to still do some analysis on that. And the third piece is where, where people individually might actually not have low risk, but they are connected to people who are at high risk. And we know that that is happening virtually everywhere. So most 20 year olds are in contact with somebody who might be more vulnerable by with, by virtue of their, uh, either age or their medical condition. And if a person with mild symptoms is in contact with a person who's more vulnerable, then they have a chance that that person might be affected. So this is the, this is the critical distinction between individual decision making and population decision making, which is what is the transmissibility piece? And we know it's highly transmissible. We know that it can have a significant impact on vulnerable people. And so then there becomes a, a bit of an interplay there. But at the individual decision making level, right? A person who's 20 years old might say, well, my chances of being hospitalized or, or getting into the ICU are fairly low if I get, if I get COVID. And they would be absolutely right in saying that. But, but at the population level, well, two things. One, if you actually get COVID, you don't know whether you're going to be that person who ends up in the ICU or the person who doesn't. Although the risks might be lower if you're younger, you actually don't know what's going to happen to you. So even most healthcare providers would say, because you don't know, you might as well give yourself the best chance of not ending up in the hospital, which is to vaccinate yourself in addition to maintaining your health status in general, right? But I think that goes back to, uh, Counsel Ramboz's point, which is that, you know, this is why we need to make space for those discussions with individuals. And we need to actually be respectful of the fact that people can look at some of that information and make individual choices. Where we need to restrict those choices or where we need to, um, have more stronger tools to enable uptake of vaccine. There, you know, there are circumstances under which that might need to happen. And so I think I've outlined what those are.
Okay, um, in the essence of time, we've gone over the, a lot of time. We should shift it back to the record rest of the agenda. I, I think we'll, we'll end the discussion there. Thank you so much, Dr. Renaday, for, uh, your extended update and look forward to the next one. Counsel, or Counsel Bradley, you had your hand up?
It's not the Counsel Stark one to speak. I think this discussion is too important to just end it arbitrarily. But I do want to make one point. There's a lot of reference to the Acting Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Rande. And there was a situation where, I'm sure you're aware, there was concerns about that individual's support for public health measures, right? So all the minister said was that she does not approve acting medical officers of health. She only has that control over full-time medical officers of health. It had nothing to do with the legitimacy of what an acting medical officer of health could do in that time period. That's what the debate was in Holman Norfolk. And the minister said, no, I cannot, I don't appoint actings. But they're expected to govern, as you've said, as, as the full-time medical officer of health. And the only time the minister would step in is when you're dealing with a full-time medical officer of health. So it's sort of being distorted that the minister, the acting person does not have the full scope and authority. And if I understand correctly, that you were working with Dr. Greensmith throughout this situation when you were away anyhow.
Okay, so as you indicated, Counsel Stark, I'll give you the last comment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I would like to respond to Counsel Bird's comments. One clarification is the slides that Dr. Renaday referred to came directly from the Ontario Science Table. They are verified statistics. They show clearly that unvaccinated people are present, putting an unfair burden on society in terms of their hospitalization usage and IC usage. So my question is, in fact, the charts that you showed, they represent the, um, uh, the science-based analysis that the Ontario Science Table uses, is that correct?
Um, Counselor, they're taken directly from an Ontario Science Table presentation that is public, uh, publicly available on the Ontario Science Table website.
Thank you very much. And so finally, I would like to say that I don't blame anybody for COVID-19. What I do respect is everybody's ability to make their own decision with respect to vaccination. Once that decision is made, people need to realize they have to live with the consequences of their decisions and the limitations of their decisions. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think, uh, again, in the essence of time, uh, well, uh, thank you again, Dr. Renaday, and we will see you next time. Moving on, uh, we have no delegations today. And that brings us to, uh, the minutes of Lampa County Council, September 1st. We have a motion to adopt those minutes, Counsel White, seconded by Counsel Ferguson, all in favor? Opposed and be carried, thank you. Under correspondence, we have four items. We have a motion to receive and file, Counsel Bean and Counsel Cook. All in favor? Opposed? Counsel Bradley?
Yes, I, I would like, I'd like to see those, those four different resolutions voted on individually. And I believe there's one there from Clinton, Wyoming, which I'm sure the mayor would like to, to deal with. And I certainly don't mind moving the, uh, the Internet one, number A, and also number C, which came from Sarnia City Council.
Okay, so the mover and the seconder, okay with withdrawing that original motion?
Chair, I'm all right with it.
Okay, Counsel Bradley moves, seconded, second for that motion. Counsel Stark. Would you like to speak to this?
Mr. Warden, I was moving A and I thought you would go through B, C, D.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to receive and file A?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear this morning. I was moving endorsement on A.
Oh, okay, thank you for that clarification, I didn't catch that. So, um, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Number B, or sorry, item B, moved by Counsel Napper?
Yeah, I'd like to refer endorsement on that one, too.
Okay, seconded by Counsel White. All in favor of that? That is carried. C, mover for C? Counsel White, seconded by Counsel Bradley. All in favor of that? Opposed, that's carried. And number D, the letter from Amy Burkhart, moved by? Counsel Stark, seconded by? Counsel Loosely. Any discussion? Counsel Bradley?
Mr. Warden, if it's, if it's appropriate, can we blend D with the report from Corporate Services discussion on the vaccination policy? Can we blend them together into one vote?
We'll just receive and file this one and deal with the substance later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you heard Mr. Tifo, so, um, all in favor of that, uh, to move?
Received and filed.
Received and filed D. All in favor, opposed, that's carried, thank you. So we had no information reports at this time and no items requiring motions. So that brings us to reports requiring a motion, Corporate Services, on the report on vaccination policy. So do we have a motion for, uh, Deputy Warden Hand moves and seconded by Counsel Weaver? And Counsel, uh, Mr. Tifo, did you want to address this?
Uh, yes. Sorry about that. Um, I've got, uh, our manager of Human Resources, Tony Furtado, online. And I also have David Cummings, which is our Corporate Health and Safety Officer. In short, uh, the policy as adopted would require proof of vaccination by October 31st. Benning Wish, um, if there's no proof of vaccination supplied, would require testing on a seven-day, uh, period, i.e. seven days prior to attendance of a physical workplace of the counties. And, uh, in the absence of testing results, uh, the member would be required to, uh, to attend meetings electronically. The, the policy as drafted, uh, is meant to balance a number of interests. Of course, health and safety in the workplace, secondly, privacy considerations. And thirdly, what I would call casual potential human rights considerations. Hence why the way it was crafted, and the way that it was crafted, it's a, uh, the result of a multi-disciplinary review, which includes health and safety, human, uh, uh, human resources, the clergy perspective, of course, in terms of county, uh, public, uh, resources, and as well, uh, public health, medical considerations. So subject to any questions that from the presentations I have at this one, thank you.
Counsel Stark?
Uh, yes, Mr. Tifo, with respect to the testing component, and I'm, I'm now referring to the, uh, council, uh, version of the policy. With respect to the, uh, testing, uh, as I understand it, a test could occur by an individual and then they would attend a in-person meeting within seven days. And, and in fact, uh, be qualified to do so, even though that intervening seven days would, would potentially allow, uh, a, um, either an asymptomatic, uh, situation or a contracting of COVID during that period, unknownst to the, to the individual. Thus allowing them to spread, uh, COVID during the, uh, period of the, of the in-person meeting. My question is, if, and I am, I am double vaccinated as of June 26th of this year. Would I be able to, would I qualify for, um, online attendance, even though I have provided the county with evidence that I am double vaccinated? Because I will not attend any meeting with anyone who is not, not double vaccinated. Is that a choice that's available to me?
Mr. Tifo, please, or should we refer to, um, Ms. Furtado?
That's, that's fine, I think that's a, a clerk, uh, a question, counsel, relations question. So, so, so the question is, if any one member chooses moving forward in the future not to attend an in-person meeting of council for his or her own, uh, reasons, one reason being because perhaps not a hundred percent of council may be, uh, double vaccinated. And council addressed this, uh, back in September. And in September, you approved a, a model that would allow for hybrid participation in meetings. And that would allow individuals, if they choose for personal reasons, and they have personal reasons, in this case, perhaps out of fear, uh, if they choose to. of fear, if they choose to attend electronically, then that would be for that individual to make that decision, of course, communicating that decision to us. So the short answer is yes, based on the hybrid model that was approved by council back in September, which forces on a trial basis, and the hybrid model is meant to expire in November of next year. And we would sort of study sort of the reasons why folks are not participating in person. But at that point in time, I would suggest that.
Thank you. Under that scenario, I will support the motion being put forward with the understanding that I will not participate with anybody who is not vaccinated in person. Thank you.
There was another piece I do wish to address, which was the testing element of this policy. Okay, I think that was sort of the preemptive sort of commentary to the question. So again, from the county's perspective, you take a look at it from a health and safety perspective, of course, as an employer's perspective as well. I think the intent here is to exercise due diligence while at the same time balancing rights, balancing rights, that is, a right to a health and safe environment, and of course, trying to avoid to the extent possible transmission of the virus. So in the circumstances here, there is this notion of testing, and testing at least in the later than seven days prior to attending a workplace. And for you as members of council, that would typically involve two tests per month because you effectively meet twice, once you choose to meet in person. But the seven-day, let's call it standard, was plucked as well from standards that apply in RLTC homes for a member of employees, visitors, whoever it may be, which has since changed, and that's why our policy also contemplates potential changes. But let's assess that as against seven days versus, let's say, two days. Again, the two-day piece might be a sort of exercise in terms of assessing risk, frequency of risk equals probability, and therefore more testing equals reduction of risk. But we need to go, we need to recognize that at the end of the day, there is no guarantee. There is zero guarantee whether I'm fully vaccinated or not fully vaccinated, as to whether or not I am transmitting the virus itself. Our understanding is that the virus, when you are fully vaccinated, your viral power is significantly reduced, and that's the benefit of fully, plus the protection against symptoms of being fully vaccinated. So that's the perspective that was adopted. If we adopted a vax, what I would call a vaccination or bust type of policy, you're vaccinated or you don't participate, for our perspective, the way that we approach these things, it would also not lend to enough flexibility for those who we do, we do have to accommodate for various reasons. Hence why the testing is in, the rationale for the seven days is really what we've seen out in the marketplace in other sort of more specific sectors, and it's also balancing everybody's rights and, of course, community resources, because if we're going to say every second day you need to be tested, that's a big string on community resources, which we're trying to do is exercise due diligence. So our policy balances all those factors at this point in time, not saying that it's guaranteed positive, the end best scenario, but it also contemplates potential amendments and reviews.
Okay, thank you for that. Deputy Warden Hand, you have a question?
I just had a question about the seven days, because that's a different number than some other policies that are currently out, including, I think, my own municipality. I just, is that, it seems like a long timeframe? I'm not sure. But I'm sure, I mean, you sought input, maybe it's just different.
Right, and that's not surprising to us in terms of difference, but again, the factors in that is, again, it's an exercise of due diligence. There is no such thing as guarantees here. Fully vaccinated or not fully vaccinated, there's no guarantee at the end of the day. We need to accept that. So it's an exercise of due diligence, balancing those interests, those different perspectives, different rights, and saying, at the end of the day, what is reasonable at this point in time? And for us, as we say, balancing all that, community resources for the testing, of course, as soon as all employers go and ask for testing, there's going to be an impact on our community resources. So we wanted to balance everything with the understanding that there is no perfection here, there is no true one answer. Again, at the day, it's all about exercising reasonable due diligence, and we believe that that achieves, our policy achieves that. And of course, our folks here, Mr. Furtado or Mr. Cummings, can chime in at any point in time.
Thank you.
Counselor White.
Thank you. Great segue there, Mr. Tifo. I was going to speak to Mr. Cummings' presence here and just ask for a comment on councillors in the building and the effect it has on risk in terms of health and safety for the members of staff.
Warden, through you.
The, when councillors are attending council, it's not only coming into council chambers, but also as opportunity to interact with staff, senior staff, whether in chambers or in person at various points throughout the building. The risk presents is through those interactions where, you know, we're within two meters for prolonged periods of time, and often those questions that are being posed merit an answer that's longer than 15 minutes, so that in and of itself creates the risk of potential exposure and transmission.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Any other question? Counselor Napper?
Yeah, I just sent the air kind, it's made what happened to good old common courtesy. You tell me you're vaccinated, and I'll decide where I want to go and when I'll want to go. It may not be this venue, it might be some other venues, but I just think it's common courtesy, like, you know, I have no problem if I had some rare disease, I'd come out and tell you. I just, I don't know, I just, it's made by all this stuff, what we're making out of it.
Okay, Counselor Rumbos.
I think there's a little bit of confusion about the difference of somebody who's unvaccinated and somebody who has a rare disease. And this is, I just don't see how any of this makes sense. If I were to go to India, I would have to be vaccinated for certain diseases. Is that correct? Right? So I would take the vaccine, knowing that I'm going into the lion's den of those diseases, and trusting that that vaccine is going to protect me. That's why we get vaccinated. So if you trust that this vaccine is a good vaccine, and it is there to help protect your health and keep you from being hospitalized or in the ICU, then you should have no problem with anybody else, because you have protected yourself. Full stop. You've protected yourself. And as Mr. Tifo has said, there are breakthrough cases, and there are times, but the odds of that are so slim. I just think to force people to do things against their will to protect somebody who has already protected themselves using the vaccine does not make sense.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Counselor Bradley.
Yes, Mr. Warden and County Council. One of the primary obligations of elected people, different than the general public, is to protect the public health. That is the basic, and Mayor Roundabouts, you can stop laughing at me right now. I think I should deserve some respect. I was respectful through your comments. That's our primary job, and we are mandated in the worst public health crisis in 100 years to do everything we can. And the county policy gives options, gives options to people vaccinated or not vaccinated. So it doesn't exclude anyone as we get through this situation. And I think it is inclusive, but I come back to, just as with the administration of the county, with their employees, they have a basic obligation to protect everyone in the workforce, and they're doing that. And then as elected leaders, if we are not consistent with that approach, then we undermine our top people in trying to deal with the employees and what they're trying to do there to protect the public health of the employees and the community. So I will ask for a recorded vote on this particular issue. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor White.
Thank you. I'll just follow up on that. I would never feel right to have two sets of rules, one set for us as a council and a different set of rules and expectations of staff and employees. I think we need to stand in solidarity. I said that at the city council meeting, and I feel very strongly. How dare us? How dare us allow staff to have to follow one set of rules and think that we're above that? Come on, that's incredible. That's arrogant. Excuse me for being out of line, if I am, but that is just pure arrogance to think that we should ride above those expectations. And further to public health, yeah, me getting vaccinated, if that keeps me out of the hospital, that allows a bed to remain open for somebody else who needs it, the cancer patients, the terminally ill, those who are in accidents, who require our healthcare providers to not only provide a bed, but to not be burnt out by the time that there is an emergency for somebody in my family or somebody in your family. And I'm going to look out for those people, and I think this is one step to set an example. Thank you.
Counselor Rumbos.
I want to make it clear that I don't support the decision to put this mandate on our staff or anybody else in Ontario. So I am not sitting here saying there should be rules for you and not for me. I'm saying there should not be a rule that anybody can sit in judgment on anybody else in how that they determine what is right for their health. That's what I'm saying. They should have the right to do their own risk versus reward. Everybody in Ontario should have that right. And for you, as a council, to sit here and say that you know better than the mom of four, or you know better than the people driving the snowplows about their health is disgusting. And I agree with you, Mayor Bradley, that we need a recorded vote, because history will look down on every politician who tries to force their will over the people that they are governing. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bushy, did you have your hand up? Okay. Are we ready to vote? And we've had a request for a recorded vote from Counselor Bradley, so I'll ask Mr. Tifo to please call the vote.
Thank you. So the motion on the table today is the motion that you find at page 29 of 57, you're choosing to adopt a COVID vaccination, COVID-19 vaccination policy for members of council. Recorded vote reported, requested by Counselor Bradley, and we will start with Counselor Lucy.
Favor.
Counselor Lucy, I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Miller, I have a yes. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Counselor Napper, I have a yes. Counselor Rumbos?
No.
Counselor Rumbos have a no. Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Stark, I have a yes. Counselor Bean?
Abstain.
Abstain, just for the record, means it's a no. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber have a yes. Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor White have a yes. Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold have a yes. Counselor Byrd?
No.
Counselor Byrd have a no. Counselor Bushy? Counselor Bushy, you're on mute. Take your stall, your seconds.
Yes.
Counselor Bushy have a yes. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley have a yes. Counselor Broad?
Yes.
Counselor Broad have a yes. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Cook have a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Ferguson I have a yes. Deputy Warden Hand?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Hand have a yes, and Warden Marriott?
Yes.
Have a yes. Motion carries.
Okay, that was a tough one. We'll move on to committee minutes. I would ask, call on Counselor Rumbos, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I present the committee minutes of Committee AM for councillors' consideration.
Thank you. Number one is, was Infrastructure and Development Services Information Report. Number two was the County and Entrepreneurship Illumination at the intersection of Highway 40 and County Road 2. Number three, under Public Health Services Division, correspondence to receive and file. Number four, Information Report, COVID-19 Activities. Number five, Information Report Regarding the Food Safety Program. Number six, Information Reports from Cultural Services. Number seven, the Libraries Donation Report. Number eight, the Museums, Gallery and Archives Collection Management Report. And number nine, Adjournment. Counselor Rumbos, please.
Thank you. I move the Committee AM Minutes of September 15th.
Seconded by Counselor Byrd. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I would ask Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I present the Committee PM Minutes from September 15th, 2021, for council's consideration.
Thank you. Number one is Information Report from Long-Term Care. Number two is Information Report Regarding the Debt Management. Number three, under Other Business Staff Investigate Provider Report on the Feasibility of Pre-Borrowing Funds. Number four, under Social Services, Information Report Regarding Childcare and Early Years Service System. Number five is Adjournment. Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I move that the Committee PM Minutes of September 15th, 2021, be accepted by this council.
We have a seconder. Counselor Bushy. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I believe the agenda shows no notice of motion, but I believe Counselor Rumbos has a notice of motion. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number 15, I jumped ahead. Items from previous meetings, motion to lift the table motion, Counselor Bradley, seconded by Counselor Weber. All in favor? That's carried. Counselor Bradley.
Yes, I appreciate that report from a number of years ago being distributed after Counselor Stark had raised the issue. My suggestion to County Council, or recommendation, would be this. I don't think this is the time right now to make major changes. I believe we are going to be meeting as a full group during the months ahead, but I don't think it's the time right now to make major changes to the health board. What I was going to suggest to you is that this be on the agenda of the first county council meeting of the new term for that county council, and that's when they'll be looking at committee appointments, and they can also then take a very deep dive into what sort of structure do we want, the status quo, or do we want to go to a broader health unit, which I personally favor, but I don't think in the times we're in that that's going to be productive for us for next year. But I think we can stage it to have that discussion for the new county council. So I'd recommend we table that to the new county council for that discussion.
Okay. Deputy Warden Hand, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the table motion? Opposed? That's carried. Now, number 16, notice of motion.
Oh, so we did 15B just now?
Oh, yeah.
Have to do 15A.
Okay. Second mistake, back to 15A.
I didn't address it.
Yeah, please, Mr. Tifo.
Quick, so 15A was a, again, a tabling of the question as to whether or not to return to in-person meetings, which of course will be subject to the hybrid option. Just as a brief history, latest report that we drafted on August 6, 16, 2021, simply put it on the table as to whether or not council is returned to in-person, now of course, subject to the hybrid model. But since, you should know that since the drafting of that report, back in June, mid-June, we were progressing through the steps of the reopening plan in Ontario. We were at step two, the resolving of many other restrictions. We entered step three on July 16, 2021, but we were supposed to 21 days later enter step four, which was a complete sort of elimination of most public health restrictions, but as you know, that has yet to occur. So that's a consideration that's So that's a consideration that's slightly a bit different than the report that you have, that you've tabled, which is again, uh, that, uh, it was fully expected to be in step four by the end of the summer, um, but that hasn't, uh, occurred. We are still in step three with, uh, certain, uh, regulated public health restrictions. So subject to any questions, that's all I have.
Counselor Bradley.
I was going to move that we, uh, not resume the meetings till January at the earliest, unless there's a change in the, uh, the plan the province has. But I would suggest we do that to January, and it doesn't look like we're going to have to have change from the province in the meantime.
That's, that's a motion, Counselor Bradley?
Yes, it's a motion that we do not meet till January unless the province, uh, speeds up its, uh, its order to the province.
We have a second here for that. Counselor Napper and Counselor Stark, you had a comment?
Agree with that, uh, which is consistent with what we're doing in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, discussion before I call the vote? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Now we can move on to, uh, number 16. Counselor Rumbos, you said you had a, a notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. Um, my, this is to be considered at the next County Council meeting, whereas the vaccination rate in Ontario has surpassed the original target required by the provincial government to reopen Ontario, and whereas the COVID-19 vaccine is working to reduce hospitalizations and deaths in Ontario, whereas the COVID-19 vaccine does not permit, promise to prevent the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, whereas the Ontario government's requirement to produce proof of vaccination at select locations and places of employment is creating undue hardships to thousands of small businesses, municipalities, healthcare facilities and families across Ontario, and whereas the people of Ontario are intelligent and autonomous beings capable of researching and deciding what healthcare is right for themselves and their children. Therefore, we, the Council of County of Lampton, request that the provincial government of Ontario remove all mandatory requirements to show proof of vaccination across all sectors in Ontario and return Ontario to a place where everyone is treated as equals.
Okay, um, just maybe, uh, to send in a copy of the re-motion.
Okay, Counselor Rumbos? Yeah, please, that was a long one. We had no, no action to take at this time. So under other business, any other business? And, uh, moving on then to, uh, notice of bylaws. Mr. Tifo, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, it's moved by Counselor Bushy, seconded by Counselor Napper, that bylaw number 20 of 2021, as certainly to be taken as read first and second time.
All in favor of that? That's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Napper, seconded by Counselor Bushy, that bylaw 20 of 2021, as certainly to be taken as read third and final time.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, our next, uh, County Council meeting will be November the 3rd at 9:00 a.m. Thank you again. Moved by Counselor Weaver, seconded by Deputy Warden Hand. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.